I would like to call to order the Norwood City School District Board of Education regular board meeting for September 15, 2022. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bi-monthly meeting schedule. First meeting of the month is called a committee meeting. At this meeting, we discuss fully our agenda for the board meetings to be held on the third Thursday each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch and listen to our committee discussions, which results in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public. Visitors are always welcome. This is Camp House. Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Mrs. Rarica.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
With all members present, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item 1.4 in our agenda is the adoption of tonight's agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda as presented to us. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
With the agenda accepted, we'll move on to 1.05 and 1.06. 1.05 is the minutes for the regular meeting held on August 18, 2022. 1.06 is the minutes for the board retreat also held on August 18, 2022. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented to us.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
All right. With that approved, we do not have any presentations for tonight's meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we'll move on to section three in our agenda. This is the education committee report, and I would like to turn the floor over to board member Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. President. As discussed last week, we have three upcoming field trips for approval. Two aren't going to be till next year. First is the Sharpesburg Elementary YMCA Camp Campbell Guard Field Trip, and second is the Norwood Middle School Washington, D.C. trip. Both of those take place in May of next year, so that way we have plenty of time for planning and financial arrangements and things like that. We had our first discussion for Washington, D.C. during our open house last week. If you still have questions, please reach out to the middle school staff involved in that trip. The third is the Norwood View trip to Green Acres for their science field trip. I'd like to make a motion that we approve all three of these field trips for these students.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I apologize, but I just noticed something in the agenda that's not there, that should have been in the policy section. So we may have to go back and amend the agenda.
Is policy not in here?
The policy is in there, but we were going to create an assignment, so there's an assignment section that's not in there.
Well, I think you can do an assignment that's not in the agenda.
Okay. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be fine.
All right. That's fine. So, sorry, I just, I just, I expected something to be there and I didn't see it.
I saw it earlier too, and I just kept thinking, what is this? You don't remember and you don't think I see it.
Yeah. All right. Well, we'll just take care of that when it comes.
We'll get there.
Yeah, we'll get there. Okay. Section four personnel, I'd like to turn the floor over to Superintendent Ronan.
Thank you, President Atwood. Under 4.01 resignation, I do want to thank Michaela Messero and Teresa Stock. They are leaving us and thank, I'm going to thank them for their many years of service. Then, under 4.02 employment. Number one, Mr. Stacy is our dean of students. His stipend. Number two, we have lots of supplementals, teachers who are doing our yearbook, student council, et cetera. Number three is band camp. I'd like to thank Diana Prater for, Diane, for going to band camp with the band and handling all our medical issues for us. Number four, classified subs. We are so happy to have Carolyn Shermer back with us subbing for us. Number five, it's our Great Avenues for Success after-school program. As you can see, we have an entire list of site staff and teacher liaisons to keep that program running. And I believe I'm going to stop right there for this section because there is a box to vote.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the employment section and the resignation section, the employment section from one through five.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
All right. Then, I will continue at section six. We're hiring several educational aides or student assistants because under the resignation section, we lost some. So these are the individuals to replace the employees that we lost. That's under number six. Then, number seven, we are running, approving all the employees of the district because during the course of the year, oftentimes, our staff, they volunteer to tutor, do home instruction, and this allows them to start immediately. Number eight is the approval for the Norwood Police Department and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office to provide security for all our after-school and sports events. Number nine, our middle school counselor worked two additional days during the summer, making sure all of our students have schedules for their classes. Number 10 is a change in status. We're increasing the hours of two of our educational aides at the middle school. And part 11 is, it's a correction to the August 18 agenda. And I'm going to stop at section 11 because we do have another box there to vote.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the employment recommendations for section four items six through 11 as presented to us.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
There's a voting box under six. Do we?
No, I think we can lump all of those.
Really? You don't have to abstain?
I'm going to abstain.
Oh, no, okay.
But there's nothing in the other items that would, I think, would keep us
Yeah, I agree.
from just lumping it.
I agree.
But I will be abstaining from this. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Abstain.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
All right. Now, under number 12, we have pupil activity contracts for the 2022-23 school year, and we have a list of individuals who will be coaching and involved in fall sports. And there is a voting box there, and after that, that will conclude my personnel report.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the employment recommendations for section four, number 12, as presented to us.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you, Superintendent Ronan. We'll move on to section five in our agenda, and this is the policy committee report. I'd like to turn the floor over to Vice President Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have several policies tonight for the first reading. We have I.C., or, I'm sorry, I.G.C.H.-R, which is also L.E.C.-R. Also within this would be I.G.D.J. and I.G.D.K., and I'm just going to read because there's a lot of letters, a lot of background here. So this is the OHSAA annually reviews and considers amendments to its five walls. When these five walls are made, districts are informed of these changes and OHSAA documents are updated. So districts will use the most current OHSAA documents and requirements when communicating various requirements, particularly eligibility to students, parents, and coaches. We're doing specific OHSAA eligibility criteria for our policies and the affecting policies. So that's, that's what that is. Christina explained that in better detail last week. We also have KGB, which is public conduct on district property. So this just adds additional substances for living on school property and makes legal reference to city ordinance. GVP, drug-free workplace, again, a legal reference. And then GBH, which is also JM. This is student-staff relations. So this policy is saying that staff needs to use district-provided communication rather than their personal devices to communicate with students. So I would like to make a motion to approve the following new policies and revisions of policies and regulations.
I'll second. Any discussion on these policies? So this is just the first reading that we're having. We'll do the second reading and the adoption of it next month. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
All right. Since there is no 5.02, we're going to create a 5.02. And so this is something in looking at our enrollment numbers over the past number of years. The trend that we're seeing is a steady, small decline year over year, over year. And so I think it is now time for this district to have an honest and open conversation about what it may look like, to see what open enrollment could do, would do for this district, whether it's a good idea. And so I think in order to start this conversation, I think it would be good for this body to create an assignment for Superintendent Ronan to pull together the right resources within the district. So administrators, teachers, things of that nature, to start looking at what policies, what other districts are doing, and getting all of that research done, so that way something can be presented to us in the upcoming months, maybe later in the winter, maybe probably beginning in the spring. So that is the request at this point. So I'm going to make a motion that we create this assignment for Superintendent Ronan and allow her to put together the team that she thinks needs to be on that, and then we can discuss it. I'm making the motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a couple things, actually. We were discussing the same thing last night at the Great Oaks Board Meeting on trends, and they were saying that in the next five to six years, we're actually seeing the lowest number of 18-year-olds, period. So generationally, we have less children across the board. That's affecting many districts, and we've got 36 feeder schools that are all reporting very similar things. The only differences have been in areas, like we were looking at Laurel Oaks, which is more rural, areas that have building booms where folks are moving out to those districts are the only ones that are seeing growth in terms of student density, and it's only because that's where the houses are going. So it's not because of birth rates going up necessarily over the next projected five-year plan. So for us, we're looking at campus growth and class size and things like that, and our feeder schools, and we're noticing the same exact trend. So we're trying to plan ahead, so we need to start looking at our middle schoolers for graduation numbers, and that's going to be a better pool to predict over the next five to 10 years where our numbers are going, rather than trying to look at current high schoolers for overall graduation rates. Those numbers are going to change drastically, we're hoping, over the next 10 years because they're, they're seeing a higher growth rate. So I don't know if that's something that we could potentially, you know, hire an outside consultant for or partner with Xavier, but look for growth rates of birth population in the area and to help us build projections in a better way, because it's not going to necessarily only be affected by students moving here. It's, it's birth rate, big, big amount of its birth rate. So that could be something that we would want to look into as well.
We can hire someone to do projection, enrollment projection. That is pretty standard.
Right.
But that doesn't help us bring in more students.
Right.
So, I mean, of course, I do an enrollment projecting, a projection every year, and it's just like anything else, it's just an estimate. But so many of the issues that we're seeing now are, we're losing those multifamily homes. They're becoming single-family homes. And just that right there, if it's going from a four-family to a one-family, you can see why we're, we're having issues with student count.
And that's why these more rural districts are getting those families, because they're moving to bigger houses where they can have larger homes. So that's why I'm like, anything that will help us, if it's an open enrollment discussion, if it's looking at birth rate projections, anywhere we can start to see where our numbers are going to come from will help us.
Yeah.
Because we have, we have less property and we have less kids, period, to pull from.
What's more concerning to me, and I think the birth rate conversation is extremely important, and definitely something that we should pay attention to, but what's more concerning to me is the fact that, you know, we're a city within a city, and in this city, we are surrounded by, my last count, no fewer than 14 other school districts that recruit kids from the city. 14, at least. And I'm maybe off a little bit in that.
You're right.
You know, we're a closed district at this point, and so when you think about that, it, we don't know for sure, but it is estimated that up to 40% of the school-age children population in the city do not go to our schools. 40%. And we have a lot to offer.
I could talk about that one all day.
So that's why I think it is very important to, you know, create this assignment, have this discussion, let's see what we learn, right? Open enrollment policies can be very tailored to the needs of the district. So let's, let's see where this conversation goes and, and, you know, give the, the people that are chosen to be on that team the time and the resources in order to really do a deep dive and figure that out and figure out what's going to work best for us, and then we take a look at it after that, and then have a very open and frank conversation for ourselves.
Let me just want to emphasize, for anybody watching this discussion, you know, this topic is, it's a very polarizing topic within this community. So I just want to emphasize that what is being voted on tonight is just the task of asking, asking Mrs. Ronan to look into this and see what it looks like. A yes or a no vote from the five of us does not say we support or don't support open enrollment. It's just saying, let's look into it. So I just want to clarify that for the public.
This is just research and getting a committee.
This is pretty much research and how to start this, because I don't want, I don't want our inbox is blowing up with, with people thinking we're supporting or not supporting open enrollment.
Right. We're just, we're looking for information.
We're just looking for information.
For voices that we have at the table, I want to make sure that if we're including staff members here and how they feel, it would probably be important to have a staff member that used to work at a district from, with, that had open enrollment, because that's a very unique perspective to have. Someone who's already gone through it can, can tell us their experiences. We need to have that voice heard at the table as well.
Any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is to create an assignment for Superintendent Ronan, put together an exploratory committee to, to start researching the topic of open enrollment.
It was already seconded, right?
Yeah, we've already seconded, so I'm just reminding everybody what it is that we're, we're doing here. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
All right. With that done, that concludes the policy committee report. We're going to move on to the building, Buildings and Grounds Committee Report. I'd like to turn the floor over to board member Mrs. Rarica.
Approving facilities, which we have a couple added since our last, but they look fine. We have the Norwood Civil Service wants to use our cafeteria in the high school for their exam on September 15th and 21st. Oh, 15 is late.
That is today.
Well, I hope they did, or they're there doing it now. And the Cincinnati College Preparatory Academy would like to use Shea Stadium for a football game on tomorrow. And the Gotham Soccer League would, it's an adult soccer league, would like to use Shea Stadium on the 19th. And the Norwood Police would like to use Shea Stadium for their agility testing. And Mueller High School needs Shea Stadium for a soccer game.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, the facility use request as presented to us.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Looks like Shea Stadium is pretty popular.
I know. It's like, yeah, Shea again, Shea again. Must be a great place to be. I like it.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
All right. With that, we'll move on to section seven in our agenda, and this is the finance committee report, and I'd like to turn the floor over to District Chair Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have documents on your table that show the updated plans for the Keep Norwood Cool Project at the high school. It is a small project that doesn't need official board approval, but if you re-review the plans and see something that you don't like, just call me and we can talk about it. One of us will be on site to make sure the trees are installed where we want them on actual planting days. I think I have a good understanding of the board's concerns on placement of the trees. I have a brief construction update. Mr. Peter will be with us next month for a full update, but I wanted to pass along just a few things for now. At the high school, construction crews were scheduled to start to install the chiller and the cooling tower on Monday, but it tripped some breakers and damaged a circuit board on the chiller, so we are waiting on a replacement circuit board. The high school roofing project is continuing. They were hoping to do the roof over the horseshoe gym section over the weekend because it is actually a metal roof, and it would make considerable noise. With the recent rainy weekends we've had, they've been forced to try and tackle this area during the week. And the pool has been filled with water, and we are waiting delivery of the chemicals to get it ready for swimming season. On the board report, on the agenda, I'm sorry, is our financial reports, the CFO report, and change order listings for your review and approval. 7.02 is temporary appropriations, our budget for the current year. 7.03 is the transfer to severance, the severance fund, as we've had several retirements this past summer. Our severance fund needs more cash. This fund typically has less than $75,000 in it at year end. 7.04, new account, K-12 school safety grant. I am so happy to report that Norwood schools have received a $250,000 grant to continue our security updates at our school buildings. The allotment is $50,000 per building, Sharpesburg and Spurts buildings are combined. We will start working on these updates as soon as we receive quotes. 7.05, UPC resolution for a transit van. We talked about this last week. This gives me a backup plan to purchase a van if the first one doesn't work out. 7.06, HCC Learning Center to provide IEP services for a student assigned to Hamilton County ESC. The Best Point Service Agreement to provide IEP services for a student assigned to Best Point, which was formerly the children's home. 7.08, Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding to join this great resource for promoting and protecting public school state revenues. 7.09, then-and-now purchase orders. I have three then-and-now purchase orders to be approved, two for annual subscriptions that didn't get a purchase order in time, the other purchase order had the wrong number of trips on it for a 21, 21st century opportunity. That is all we have for the finance.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the finance item 7.01 through 7.09 as presented to us.
I'll second.
Any discussion? So I have, the one thing I want to say, and this is related to the construction update, right? So the thing with the chiller, just so that everybody is aware, this is what is currently keeping the high school from being adequately cooled, is, is the issues with the, with the chiller. And, you know, the one comment that was made to me when, when I was there this week and talking with Mr. Burley is, is that, you know, he has no idea how anything in that building operated before they started messing with it. I mean, it was, it's, it's like everything was put together with Band-Aids and duct tape.
Don't forget the bubble gum. I know there was a pack of two.
And involved with it as well, but, I mean.
What's that, an OFCC project?
I mean, but it's, it's like we've been lucky as a district in that building for decades. Nothing should have worked in that building, at all. And now that we're starting to update it, I mean, we're, I mean, it's just one thing after the other. All the buildings that we've done construction with and remodeled with, this is the one building that we're having the biggest headaches with, and it's the newest building.
Goes to say something about when it was built, construction.
Yeah.
The value of how it's built.
Right. So if people can just be patient with us and understand that, I mean, as of right now, it's an active construction site.
Yeah.
We're trying to fix everything that's happening with it as quickly as we can. I mean, it's just, it's one thing after another. It's like you start pulling on the, on the wire that you see in the wall, and next thing you know, you've got half the next room included.
It's not that dramatic, people. It's all right.
It's close.
But we fixed, we can fix a lot of things at the high school.
I mean, look at our change order list.
Change orders. Have you ever pulled on a thread, a thread on your sweater? Oh, I'll fix it. All of a sudden, you have a crop top. That's what we're doing right now.
Right. Yeah. The amount of change orders for the stuff that we're finding as we're going through this, I mean, it's, wow.
Yes.
So.
You know what? One out of five. That ain't bad.
One out of five. Right. One out of five.
Well, I was there last week for curriculum night. I was spending quite a bit of time on the fourth floor, and, you know, I think, I think the worst is over, you know, as we're moving into September and, and fall.
Everybody's not happy.
I think it's, I think the worst is over, and, you know, the teachers I spoke to, none of them were, were, you know, in whatever, whatever. I don't want to say, I can't find my words tonight, but, you know, they were fine. They were like, it's fine, we're getting through, it's going to be fine. So I think it's a lot better, I think, than it was that first weekend. And, you know, I was speaking with Brandon, you know, offline about it, and I said, you know, I feel terrible for him, you know, I mean, it sucks not to have air conditioning, but I have to go back to growing up in this district. We didn't have air back then in any of these buildings. And, you know, I said, I remember we wore a lot of the shorts to school until the last two weeks of school or something, so, so we survived, and it's, it's not ideal, but, but it's okay, and it's going to be worth it, so.
This is the third year, though, of the high school construction, so it is, people's nerves are wearing thin, and I can understand that it's, it's hard to live in a construction zone for three years.
It is.
But we had to because we just, we couldn't clear out the high school. There's no place to put all those children, so.
Right. And it's better that we better our buildings.
Yeah.
So I was going to say, to build on that, is that we have to better our buildings. We can't let them rot.
Yes.
So these are the pains of doing that. It's either we let it rot or we keep up maintenance on our buildings, and we have to, and this is what we have to do. So it is a sign of, like, this is what we have to do to get better.
Growing pains.
Right, the alternative is sitting and rotting buildings, and people don't like that either.
Right.
And we're definitely being responsible, it's just a painful transition.
And with COVID shortages and delays in shipping, that has not helped any of the projects. Anybody working on stuff at home knows the same drill, they're waiting on this part, that part, or the other part, and you can't do everything else without that one part.
Yeah.
We're still waiting on storm windows at my house that have been ordered for over a year.
There you go.
We had very cold winter last one. Yes, up the storm windows, we still don't have them.
Any other discussion? The only other item I want to comment on as it relates to the finance items is 7.08, so the dues for the Coalition for Equity and Adequacy for School Funding. This is extremely important to me, it should be extremely important to this entire district. I mean, so this is the same group of people that, you know, was that 20, 30 years ago with the, was it the DeRauld case? Where they, where they found that the state was in violation of the Constitution for funding schools. Never fixed it, right? But now here we are back again with, you know, similar issues.
Right.
So it's really important that we protect the funding for public schools.
Exactly.
Small price debate. Any other discussion items or points? Mrs. Camp House, please call the board.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on with that passed, move on to Section 8, this hearing in the public. I don't have any requests to speak to us, and I don't see anybody here, so we'll skip that and move on to Section 9 in our agenda, which is the reports. And so 9.01 is board announcements. Any board members have any announcements that they would like to make?
I have one. I went to the library this week and talked with Clint Powers. He's a friend of our schools. He's already set up to work at Williams Avenue doing storytime with the kids. He wants to get into the other elementaries as well. Hint, hint to any of our teachers out there that wants storytime set up, please contact him at the library. His, he gave me his email, it's Clint.Powers@chpl.org. He wants to set up storytimes. And then there's also a calendar of events, which he gave me a calendar copy. It's available on their website, at the public library's website, and you can select your local branch from there. And we have all kinds of different things. We've got preschool storytime, we've got clubs and classes and all kinds of different things happening at our public library. And he's just been a really good partner to our district, and I think that we have some untapped resource potential there for our students. Please go see them, use the library, and get your teachers to use the library, too.
All right, thank you. Any other board announcements?
Let's call out, this Saturday, we have the Norwood OMEA, the band invitation that will be at Shea Stadium.
That's correct.
I think it starts at 6 o'clock. Norwood is supposed to perform around 8. I have volunteered this in the past. This event is huge. So anybody that would like to go and support our band, I'm sure they would appreciate that, anybody that's free, I know they're even looking for donations of baked goods and things like that to sell, they have a hospitality. This is, this is a really, really, really big deal. I'm not, I'm not able to volunteer this year, but I know that Amanda Moore is in charge of it, she's been looking for volunteers. If anybody's interested, she can be reached at 1-242-725. So support our band.
Oh, and speaking of Saturday, the off-pike market is also, again, this Saturday's the monthly off-pike, right around the corner from the middle school.
I think there's a bunch happening, I can't think of them, but...
I'm sorry?
And a band at night and...
I think there's a bunch of stuff happening on Saturday, but I know that's in the morning.
Fastball team is having a golf outing on Saturday.
Aww.
So...
Well, wait. That will not fit.
All right, with no other board announcements, we'll move on to 9.02, the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Roden?
Thank you. I have a short report. I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that the district office is returning to Williams. We have been in Sharpsburg and we want to thank Sharpsburg. They have been great this past year, giving us space, but we are, we are moved back to Williams Elementary. So if anyone, oh, there, and I've got, there's the offices. So I just wanted everyone to be able to locate us. I believe that's the treasurer's office, I believe, that we're looking at there. So that's all, the treasurer's office, superintendent's office, back at the board office at Williams School. So that's where we're located. So I want to thank Mr. Peter and the crew who got us back there.
Looks like we're having Super Bowl parties in Julie's office.
Yes, that is the treasurer's office. They already have it decorated. Our offices are still full of boxes, but it's coming along. We literally just moved in Monday and Tuesday.
It's really nice. We were watching a webinar on it the other day, it was really great.
And I did want to mention, we did have a building tour for Williams families the day before school started, so the parents could see how great the building looks. The new lights just work wonders. It looks so light, so bright. Just a big change.
It is, it's nice.
All right, thank you Superintendent Roden. 9.03, the Greater Ex report, I'd like to turn the floor over to Board Member, Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some folks may have received this little booklet in the mail. This is our Adult Education, Continuing Education and Enrichment packet. It talks about everything from cooking classes to certifications in other fields like phlebotomy, computer classes, all types of different things. You can sign up for individual classes online, but if you get one of these books, you can check out all the different descriptions and costs, and a lot of the classes, some range from just one night for just an overall informational class to several weeks of courses to gain a certification. It's a really neat tool if you want to just go do something fun or get a new license or start a new career. The other thing that we discussed last night's meeting was our BIAC, which is our Business Industry Advisory Council. So these are business partners that are in our communities, that partner with us, that help come in and educate us on what their field needs, what are they looking for in potential hires, what do they want the students to focus on for future learning development? So if they see a trend in their field, they want to make sure that we're on target for hitting those goals so that when they graduate, they can immediately hire our students and they're ready to hit the ground running. So these partners are fundamental for us, keeping our kids on track. If you know of somebody that is part of a business that might benefit from partnering with the Oaks and have vocational outlets to support our students, tell them to reach out to their closest Great Oaks campus and become a BIAC partner, and that way we can get job opportunities for some of our kids. These are neighborhood folks, small bakeries, big businesses, factories. It doesn't matter how big or small, we want folks to partner with us for those kids. And then our biggest news, our treasurer stepped down. He's going to be retiring at the end of this year, and we hired our new treasurer last night. His name's Brian Rave. He actually served here in Norwood from '04 to '07 as a treasurer here. He's coming now from the Milford School District, and he'll be taking over starting January 1 for our district. And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ballard. Next on our list is 9.04, the Norwood Community Television Board Report. I'd like to turn the floor over to Vice President Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. So NCT obviously has been very busy with football, soccer, and volleyball, so you can check out those streams that they do. And then they are also getting ready to start up their after-school theme club as well. So I know that is highly anticipated, so...
All right, thank you, Vice President Cole. Next on the list, 9.05 is the OSBA Legislative Liaison Report. I'm going to turn it back over to Board Member, Ms. Ballard. Do you have anything?
I have a lot, actually. We just had a pretty comprehensive meeting. The Southwest and Southeast regions met this past week over in Portsmouth, Ohio, and we had several representatives from OSBA, including the Legislative Liaison, World Schwartz, came down and gave us a very huge breakdown of a lot of stuff that they were doing before leaving session. Let's see, actually, House Bill 99 started this past week, and that involves flexibility of hiring or arming campus staff, and so that was something that went into effect this past week. The requirements that were recommended by law enforcement were the 700-plus hours to become certified to carry a weapon on a school's campus. The state agreed to 24 hours, which is a slight difference in my opinion, but that's what they agreed to, but the schools can require more than that based on their own needs. And again, it's flexible per district, and they're leaving a lot to each individual district whether they want to. Nowhere in the law does it say that they have to announce who is carrying, if someone is carrying. Only certain key members need to know, like your administrative staff, your law enforcement partners, and your district, and that kind of thing. So that's been the biggest thing that has happened most recently, was House Bill 99. The other issues, House Bill 687, capital bill, and that's based on facilities construction. And they were saying that a lot of the buildings that applied, it was basically like six of every 100 requests were granted, based on the money they did have. And now they've gotten additional grants from, expanded from $5 million now to $100 million. Anyone that had previously applied for those grants and gotten denied are now at the top of that list and are able to apply for the, for the very beginning of it. You're eligible for up to $100,000 per building. These things work on physical building, alarms, cameras, locks, that type of thing. So it's actual building upgrades, it can't be used for staff or any other services, but if it's something that, you know, we haven't taken advantage of, let's go ahead and look into that, especially with talking about upgrading our systems, especially for door locks and cameras. Let's see, the other one was House Bill 140. They were talking about taxable language and fair market value language. It says it should be, it's not going to be applied on the November ballot, but it will be something that's coming up on the May 2023 ballot, so be looking for House Bill 140. I figured that would be a Julie thing that she's going to want to follow. They said basically, even years they're campaigning, odd years are when they do actual work. So we'll wait till next year until that goes onto the actual ballot. Let's see, the other one was case law issue that's coming up regarding school prayer. It's been discussed in Kennedy versus Browerton for school prayer is now overriding Lemon versus Kurtzman. They're saying that prayer is not required in schools, it cannot be required in schools. There can be no coercive requests. It cannot be held at mandatory events, so like, you know, graduations or, you know, things where you're requiring students to attend. But you can also not deny the student or a staff member their right to prayer, and in no way could we or would we. If a student wants to pray quietly, that applies to them in whatever religious capacity they have. So currently, that is set for case law, established by Kennedy versus Burt, and that's the newly replaced outdated version that we had. So everyone can and should exercise their religious beliefs quietly, and it's something that we cannot force upon a student and will not lead for a student. Other than that, we're just waiting on several things for the Business Advisory Council to issue new information on legal assistance funds, and then they've got a couple other House bills that are going to come out in the spring. So other than that, I think that's about it.
All right.
It was a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
Oh, they did say that they will be choosing a new head of House. It's still probably going to be a Republican, they've got it between two. Jason Stevens is one of the two options, and the biggest benefit for supporting Stevens is that he knows what a mill is, and that's probably...
High praise indeed.
That is high praise indeed, so I'm kind of hopeful that if we do keep one of these two candidates, that at least he knows what a mill is and how to support school finance, and he will probably be a supporter for what we need going forward in school funding.
Yeah, fantastic. All right, thank you, Ms. Ballard. The last report that we have is 9.06, this is the Avenue for Success Report, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Board Member, Mrs. Rarica.
Thank you. They secured with the Newport Aquarium a grant for elementary school programming, and they'll be totally funding eight visits at all three elementary schools for a total of 24 visits, and these begin in October for Fun Fridays. I'm not sure if that's in-school or an after-school then. I'm not sure, she didn't ask this one. But clubs are scheduled to begin in October for middle school and high school, planning continues on that. Enrollment is still open at all elementary schools, we're fully staffed at each site. Three Norwood grads have joined our staff, four of our staff are currently attending college. Work has begun to bring our Avenue for Success alumni together. Our goal is to build a strong community of alumni that value their time with us and will help us continue to deliver exceptional experience to our current students. That's all that we're saying. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That concludes all of our reports, unless you have something else?
I do, and I totally forgot about this, and I would love to have the support here of this board. I took so many notes, it's kind of crammed in here, but they said this is something that we probably want to write a letter to and maybe present at the State House on, is House Bill 529. This requires teachers to upload all materials by July 1 and update by 30 days of any changes that they might make. This includes all forms of curriculum, books, worksheets, field trips, anything that they are planning to use as educational materials. I had some choice words for this particular House Bill, but I think that it would be a detriment to our staff. There are already three current laws on the books allowing people complete access to their school's curriculum and to get anything they want in regards to what their student is learning. There's no reason for this bill, there's no reason to cause our teachers this much extra work, and I think that it might be a good idea for us to write a letter of dissent for this and send it to the State House.
I could write a resolution if you'd like.
I would love that. And the other one is House Bill 582 for term limits, from moving four-year term to two-year term for board members. I think that having two-year terms really does a detriment because then you're more worried about campaigning than actually doing any work. And it's, it's one guy from Northern Ohio that's trying to bring this bill forward. I don't, they don't see it going very far, but you never know. I think it holds less to accountability, even though he's saying that that's what it's going to be for, and it speaks to campaign, 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 and that's not what we need to be focused on. So I don't know if we necessarily need to write a resolution, but I don't really support that one. It's something to keep an eye on, but I would like to write a resolution for 529 and support our teachers not having to do all that extra stuff.
That's a good one for board to board.
Okay.
So those are the two.
Thank you. All right, and that concludes all of the reports. The next item on our agenda is future meeting notification. So it looks like the meeting's slated for October. It's going to be Tuesday, October 11 at 6:00 p.m., still here because the auditorium is not yet ready for us.
Correct.
Yeah. And then Thursday, October 20 for the regular board meeting, again, at 6:00 p.m. here. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this meeting dates and locations.
Seven.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the board.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
All right, Section 11 in our agenda is executive session, and there is one item that we need to meet in executive session about, so I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, which is the appointment and employment dismissal discipline promotion to motion for compensation of a public employee or official for the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual.
President Atwood, would you mind adding number five also?
We will also do number five, so that's a second topic, or are they related?
They're related.
They're related, okay. So we'll also enter into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G5, which are matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, regulations, or state statutes.
Seven.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the board.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
It is 6:50 PM, and we are now into executive session. We will be inviting Mr. Richardson and Mr. Conwell to join us in executive session.